On behalf of American Association of University Women and its president Gloria Kaplan, who is also going to be the timekeeper, we welcome you to our annual sponsorship of Candidates Night, where you will meet residents who are willing to give of their time to continue making North Palm Beach the greatest place to live under the sun. We also wish to recognize other of our community leaders, council members. Are there any council members here besides the one, Ms. Bickel? Our village manager, Andy, where are you? There you are. Is Zach here? He's our event person who has helped set up everything. IT person who made it so you could hear what is being said. Mike? Our newsletter person and the one who is going to be doing the filming, Ed Cunningham. He will be recording tonight's event, so if you miss anything, you can see it tomorrow. Is that right, Ed? And every 25 minutes, I think it is, right, Ed? We'll have to sort of, he'll give me a sign like this and I'll have to stop you from talking so that he can redo his camera. And last but certainly not least, our village clerk and her assistant is here too. Filippa, where are you? Filippa. Our village clerk, Jessica Green, she will be giving us voting instructions for March 8th. Jessica, this is all yours.
Good evening. Welcome to the Village of North Palm Beach Meet the Candidates event. My name is Jessica Green and it's my privilege to serve as your village clerk. I want to thank Judy Pierman and the American Association of University Women for sponsoring and hosting this Meet the Candidates event. Our village municipal election will be held Tuesday, March 8th. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This year, we have three seats on the village council up for election, named Groups 1, 3, and 5. Our qualified candidates in Group 1 are incumbent Deborah Circe and Robert Sylvani. Our qualified candidates in Group 3 are incumbent Darrell C. Aubrey and Orlando Puyol. And our qualified candidates in Group 5 are incumbent Mark Mullenex and Shawn Woods. Contact information for the candidates, copies of a sample ballot, and a printed handout from the supervisor of elections office with important dates and deadlines and vote by mail information are provided to you out in the lobby. For vote by mail ballots, they are only available through the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections office and they cannot be dropped off at polling locations on Election Day. Vote by mail ballots are only accepted at the one of the four counties' early voting locations. And I just want to also let you know that early voting is available for this election. Normally, they're not available for municipal elections, but because we're having a special election for District 88 this year, we do have early voting locations open for this election. So for the vote by mail ballots, they're only accepted at those four early voting locations or the supervisor of elections main office or one of their branch offices. If you choose to vote in person, you must vote in the precinct where you live and in that precinct's designated polling location. You will need to bring a current invalid photo identification with a signature. Approved forms of ID are listed on the Florida Division of Elections website and if you're not sure where to vote, you can find out by calling the clerk's office. Lastly, I want to remind our candidates and citizens that Florida statutes prohibit candidates from soliciting or accepting contributions in a building owned by a government entity, which includes the building we're in tonight. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve the Village of North Palm Beach.
I believe Chuck Huff would recognize you as somebody in the village who has done a good job. And I know there are other employees of the village that I have not recognized. Would you please just raise your hand or stand and let me, let us see who you are? There you go. The format for this evening will consist of two parts, formal and question and answers. Each candidate will receive up to five minutes -- I turned it off -- to introduce themselves, tell their reasons for running, what he or she would do if elected or reelected to make the village an even better place to live. After the candidates' formal presentations, pre-written questions will be given to candidates and we have a lot of them in there. They're going through them now. And they will be able to answer, give a one-minute answer. That's where our president of AAUW comes in. She will show them the card when they are finished. If the time runs out, there are refreshments provided where you may stay to informally talk to the candidates. We will start with each group here in alphabetical order, which puts the incumbents first in their group, to introduce themselves, starting with Group 1, 3, and 5. Is that clear? All right. Group 1, Deborah Circe, will be the first to speak at the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. And I want to thank the University Women for hosting this event and Ms. Pierman, thank you so much for your continued dedication. My name is Deborah Circe and I am running for reelection to village council. A little bit about me. I have a PhD in business management and I teach in the Business School at Florida Atlantic University. I teach strategy and negotiating and I understand the importance of business to a thriving community. My expertise has been featured in national publications and I was named FAU Teacher of the Year last year. I am the mom of two beautiful children. They are playing soccer right out there, right now. And they go to school right here in the village at the same school that my husband attended at his childhood. And Ms. Pierman was his third grade teacher. It's this combination of business experience and motherhood that makes me a strong addition to the council. I teach my students and my children to prepare for the future and this focus on a long-term horizon, I believe, has served our village well. So some of the things that I am proud of accomplishing here at the village. We have focused on infrastructure. We cleared over 3,000 sidewalk trip hazards over the past couple of years. This year, we have started the process of replacing the Lighthouse Bridge. It starts with a plan. We've got some engineering in the budget. We're working on getting out of the streetlight business because we've got some dark corners of our village and so we're going to let FPL, they're good at lighting, they're going to start doing our lights for us. And we've also implemented a stormwater utility plan to make sure that the water has somewhere to go and that we aren't polluting our most valuable resource and this will include rehabilitating some of our soils. Yes, this involved a bit of a fee that went to you all, which brings me to my next point that I'm proud of. We lowered taxes. All right. We also, as part of being fiscally responsible, established a capital improvement plan. So we are setting aside money every single year to make sure that we can take care of our capital improvements. We did not have that six or seven years ago. We've also started to focus on small business in town. We reconstituted the Business Advisory Board that hadn't met since 2014. I also helped bring our beautiful new country club building in under budget and we have a golf, we've had a golf course here in North Palm for decades, as you all know, but it's only been in the last two years that we are now nationally recognized. We are the best public golf course in the entire state of Florida and a distinguished golf destination by Boardroom Magazine. Even if golf isn't your thing, it's not mine, a golf course of this caliber is great for property values. I'm also proud of our public-private partnership with Farmer's Table. It took some work, but we finally got french fries. Yeah, see that? That's the applause right there. I'm also really proud of some of the small things that I really take credit for, for bringing in this community. It was my idea to have the Easter Bunny go around on the fire truck, which is a tradition that I think will outlast me. And I also instituted coffee with a cup. These are some small events that help build a community. Moving forward, I really want to help protect property values here in the village. We are in the process of updating our zoning codes, which haven't had a meaningful update in nearly 50 years. We need to protect North Palm Beach from intrusive development and also protect our property insurance rates. That's a really big thing about protecting property values. Plus, part of implementing and updating our zoning codes is doing little things like allowing sheds in backyards, right? I know a lot of us, a lot of people have asked for that. And things like mother-in-law suites, detached buildings. All of that is going to be part of the discussion of our update of zoning. All right. I also want to make sure that we're careful in our growth of the US-1 corridor. Certainly, we want to see more restaurants and shops along US-1. It is our vibrant commercial corridor according to our master plan. I'm opposed to the current development that, as proposed at the corner of Yacht Club and US-1. Of course, the developers came forward and asked for the moon. You know who else asks for things? My kids ask for chocolate cake for dinner. That doesn't mean they're going to get it. It just means the developer asked for it. So like I said, I'm opposed to the way it currently is. I do want something there. I want some restaurants. I want a coffee shop. I want a place to spend some money and to build community and active use. I also really want to keep focus on parks and recreation. Our country club is gorgeous and it is now time for the rest of our village facilities to be of the same caliber. My daughter is 10 years old and the playgrounds at Osborne, Anchorage Park, and the community center are the exact same ones that have been there her entire lifetime. We finally, after years of kind of pushing and encouraging and putting it into the CIP, we're going to be replacing the playground here at the community center before summer camp starts this summer and hopefully Anchorage later this year. We also need to work on the boat and RV storage areas of Anchorage. I also want to make sure that we stay business-friendly, particularly small business-friendly. Small businesses are the backbone of any community and as I've been walking the streets of North Palm Beach, I have noticed so many-- five minutes, stop. Okay. Bottom line, I am the candidate of business and law and order. I have been endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce, the police, and the fire. I will keep you safe and I will keep you fiscally sound. Thank you.
And that's how fast five minutes goes. Robert Sylvani, Group 1.
Thank you. You know, coming over here tonight, my wife Marie said, listen, whatever you do, don't be too witty, too charming, or too intellectual. Just be yourself. What does that mean? Thank you very much. My name is Bob Sylvani. I'm running for the village council Group 1 seat and I was asked to run for a couple of reasons. One is property rights, two is village improvements, and three is safety, especially in the parks. But before that, let's talk about me a little bit. I've been here resident of North Palm Beach since 1996. I was one of the first people to buy a house on the old Lakeside Drive on the water when no one else wanted them. In fact, I got a steal. The guy before me paid $700,000 for a house. I got it for less than that. You can lose money on waterfront real estate, believe it or not. I made a deal, I got a deal, and I planned on spending a hundred grand in renovations. This is about all the money I had back then. And a year later, and tripled the budget, we finally had our dream house. It was, it was a job, but we got it done. I will tell you that my family enjoyed our 16 or 17 years there. We sold out, we bought a new the house and we were one of the first people to knock down an old house across the street from the water and rebuild new there. Married since 1990. Marie's in the audience. We had two lovely kids. Matt's about 36 and Katie's about 31 this year. Matt's a chef in Chicago and Katie's a local physical therapist. We've had a wonderful, wonderful life here. I retired a couple of years ago. I represented some of the largest financial institutions in the world, including Franklin Templeton, Bank of America's Columbia Management Funds, Columbia Mutual Funds. My last gig was with Mercury Capital, the largest institutional private placement agency in the, in the world, with offices around the world. So I've had a long career in the financial services business. In three minutes, I'm going to give you three reasons why I'm here and representing and wanting to be elected to this position. One is property rights. The zoning in progress issue is a bigger issue than people want to talk about. There are issues embedded in this that are problematic. I'm not against restrictions or limitations. I just believe that the current set of restrictions are too onerous for people to adhere to when you're building a new house here in the village. Let's put the numbers out there. There was only 20 houses in two years that required that were, that were built along the water or along the golf court that are homes in question. 20 in two years. Out of that-- wouldn't you get that for me? Out of that, we have evolved this zoning in progress to limit the height of new houses, limit the landscaping around the sides of these houses, and limit the front setbacks in requiring 50% of that to be some pervious-type materials. These are just too onerous. We need to move on to that. Secondly, village improvements, especially US-1 corridor. I live on the east side of town. I can't cross US-1 without the fear of somebody running that red light. In the village plan, six years ago, the comment was, and the number-one issue was calming of US-1 corridor. Now, how do you do that? I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but I'm sure. And we've paid plenty of consultants over the years to figure out how to calm the US-1 corridor. Nothing's been done. Our, I've read the minutes, my wife and I read the minutes of the last couple of years. What has happened is we've kicked the can down the road or they've kicked the can down the road. Let's hire a consultant. Let's do the analysis. Let's do a survey. And what happens is nothing gets done and just moves on from there. The last point was, after village improvements, was safety. We have problems in our parks. Somebody wants to talk about it, but we've got to, we've got to protect the kids in the parks. We've had lots of issues at Lakeside Park. People using Anchorage Park illegally or without permits and that's the issue tonight. So three things and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Group 3, Darrell Aubrey.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming. I think most of you, I don't mean any of you, but my background is I spent 35 years in industry with Exxon, a few with ABM. Used to be at one time, was a tenured professor at a university in Connecticut. I've been here 22 years. I've been on the council 16. And what I want to do is talk about how the village is doing and talk a little bit about my goals and objectives for the future. The village is doing very well. We have been, we have exercised very prudent fiscal management. We run balanced budgets. We have substantial reserves that amount to approximately 40% of our budget and we have held taxes in check. In the past 16 years, the mill rate's gone up only 3.7%. That's 0.2% per year over 16 years. In this past year, our current year, we cut your taxes from 7.05 mills or 7.50 mills to 7.05. A recent state report said, reported that North Palm Beach is the fourth safest city in the state. There's 400 municipalities in the state of Florida and we ranked fourth. Unlike many governments or cities around the country who've been defunding the police, we in fact added two positions this year and I strongly support our police department. We built a beautiful new clubhouse. I'm sure many have enjoyed it. We have an excellent restaurateur. We have upgraded the golf course. They're both are doing very, very well and we've made a number of improvements to our parks over the past few years. So the village is in good shape. Looking to the future. My goal would be to continue conservative fiscal management. Assure that we use your tax dollars prudently. We want to assure the success of the country club, the restaurant, the golf course. We have a debt on that building and that debt is paid by the enterprise fund. It's not paid by your tax dollars, but the enterprise fund, meaning the country club, has to be successful for that debt to be retired. So we need to work hard to ensure the continued success of the country club. I strongly support public safety. I'm endorsed by both police department and fire and rescue, the North County Chamber of Commerce, the Palm Beach County Human Rights Council, and others. Also, we need to grow our recreational programs. A little bit slack in recreational programs for the youth and we need to do that. We have a number of infrastructure needs. Stormwater was mentioned earlier. We have much larger capital programs than we've had in the past and we need to execute those capital programs wisely and efficiently. We have a little catch-up to do in infrastructure than in years when things did, were delayed because of poor economic conditions and poor taxpayer pressures and the like. And lastly, I'm interested in protecting the character of our neighborhoods. I'm particularly concerned about overdevelopment, overbuilding on some of our waterfront residential lots. We need to protect that. We have zoning in progress that is active at the moment, but that's understudy. It's a temporary measure simply designed to buy time so we can work further to refine those codes and make them appropriate for everyone. Along the development, redevelopment of Route 1. Likewise, we need to be careful. We need to be prudent. We need to ensure the development along Route 1 is consistent with the village and fits in and is supported by our population. As you probably know, the development on Yacht Club Drive is under a lot of pressure and it is being, was pulled back by the developer, this 200 Yacht Club Drive, to try to make it more acceptable to you as members. So thank you very much for coming. I would appreciate your continued support. I will look for your votes on the 8th. Thank you.
Ready? That was very good. We're ready to go. Group 3, Orlando Puyol.
Well, good evening, friends and neighbors. I think the last time I was here, I was playing basketball. It was exciting. But anyways, my name is Orlando Puyol. But before I start, I want to thank the American Association of University Women for putting on this forum and our friend Judy Pierman. So who am I? I am an engineer, graduated from the University of Florida with a Bachelor in Science in Civil Engineering. Became a general contractor shortly after that and kind of moved along that way, but life throws curves. We got an opportunity to start a daycare. There's kids out there playing soccer. Couple of them right there, they went to the daycare. So we have, for the last 32 years, educated a lot of children. Been married for 45 years to my bride, Suzie Puyol, and we've got three children, 42, 39, 28. Two of them live right here in the village. One on Driftwood and Fairwind, the other one on Harbor and Fairwind. We just finished that house, or he just finished that house. We got their certificate of occupancy and he is the most excited young man. Not only has he got a new house, but he is expecting a child. How exciting that is. So for a length of time, 30-some years, I have owned and operated businesses and we've always been profitable. And I will do the same for you. Run this town, village, in a very profitable manner. For those 37 years that we've lived here, we've enjoyed every part, every function, whether it's the water, it's the parks, it's the activities, it's the children. The latest thing that really just tickles my heart is watching my son walk his daughters to the conservatory. Great school, magnet program. And then my daughter, my wife picks him up in the afternoon on the golf cart. Where else could you do that if it's not in the village of North Palm Beach? I'm the type of person that listens to my neighbors and my friends. If, if there's something to be done and we can do it, I get involved. It wasn't too long ago that I got off the golf course and some of my friends said, "Do you know what's going on at the corner of Yacht Club Drive and US-1?" I said, "I know a little bit about it." "Well, why don't you come down to our condos? We've got people that would like to talk." We went down there. We've had two or three meetings. They were so successful with the online, online campaign for signatures against the program that miraculously, the developer decided to pull the plug and see what happens. I don't really think we need 209 rental units at the most prestigious corner of our community. So I am not really sure what the village council was doing when they were entertaining such an idea. Secondly, I think that if you really look at the master plan that we paid a quarter of a million dollars for, does it really reflect the integrity and the charm of North Palm Beach? I don't think so. I enjoy driving my golf cart up and down US-1, waving at my neighbors and my friends. I do get a lot of number-one signs for the people that are crossing through the village to get somewhere else, but as a smile, you wave back at them. Recreation and the young children of our community are the, are the lifeline of any village. We need to make sure that they're well taken care of and we give them plenty of opportunities. We don't need our children going to neighboring towns to play in their recreational parks. We definitely have a lot of facilities here that are extremely well put together and maintained. As far as the infrastructure of our community, the fact that we've got police on both sides of the, of the bridge on Lighthouse tells me that we're waiting way too long to fix things. Way too long. All the sidewalk problems, as an engineer, I've already talked to the building department and said, "If you put a little bit of wire in those sidewalks, they won't fall apart and we won't have to grind them." Little things like that make a big difference. Before my friend up here pulls up the sign that says, "You got to get off," I will tell you that in summary, I believe it's time for a new and energetic leadership. I really believe that I'm the candidate for this position and I encourage you to vote for Puyol on March 8th. Thank you very much. God bless everyone.
Group 5, Mark Mullenex.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. It's always great to get out in front of your friends and neighbors. I'm Mark Mullenex. I grew up here in the village. I've been here since 1968. I guess Johnny Come Lately you would call me, right? So anyway, I married my wife here in the village of North Palm Beach back in 1994. We're coming up on 28 years and I'm super proud of that. She's right back there. She's the hottest blonde in the room. Sorry, ladies, but that's the one. My wife and I have four great children ranging from 25 to 8. We took a hiatus because private school was, we learned real quick, after-tax money. So we had to break and, and save up some more so we could have two more children. So that's the reason we have 8 and 11. Not an accident, we know. Not an accident, we know how to prevent that. We have good doctors, I promise you. Anyway, we love raising our children here. Like I said, I am second generation, raising third generation. We have three businesses that we own in the village of North Palm Beach. We have Atlantic Auto Glass. We own 20,000-plus square feet of commercial property and I started a new venture called Top Shelf Agriculture. We import fruits and vegetables from around the world to good old US of A and it's been going like gangbusters. I know by the way, it's not getting locked up at the port, so we're having a blast. I love the village. I planned, this is my hometown. I was so happy when I got to move back and I plan to stay here until the day I check out feet first. I am vested here and I promise you, everything I do, I take a long, long view of every choice I make from the council position. Why am I running? Well, I want to keep North Palm Beach the best place to live, to work, and to play. Again, I have three businesses here. I've been on the receiving end of the not business-friendly side of North Palm Beach and if you have a business in the village, you've been on that side too. I see a few of you nodding your heads because I know some of you are friends of mine that have businesses in the village. We've really, we've really worked hard to improve that and I, if anybody has a bad experience here in the village, I've sent out my mailer with my phone number on it, call me because I want to hear about it because these are things I want to fix if we're truly out of line. Let's see, I got three minutes? Yes, ma'am. Anyway, I am firmly convinced that public safety, when I say public safety, I mean both fire and police, is one of the great strengths of the village of North Palm Beach. This is one of the big reasons why our values continue to increase. This is one reason why people want to be here. People want to be safe. We're not defunding our police, we are actually adding to our police. We want to keep this place safe. People also want great recreational facilities, they want to have a great place to have fun, feel safe, and we've done that. We've got a, we've got a top-rated municipal golf course. We've got great recreational sports and working to improve them. We have boat ramps that people absolutely love. They can put their boats along the side of their house. We have parks that people enjoy and again, we are the fourth safest city in all of the state of Florida. While I ran in 2015, I had seven main goals. I ran, I ran on building a golf, a country club. Thank you, we got that one accomplished and that was all of us. It was tumultuous, we fought, we went round and round, those of us that were on council, it was, it was a fight, but we had a great time and we got a beautiful country club out of it. To write a master plan, that master plan, what that master plan was is that was your voice to give us the council guidance. So that was a big reason why we wrote the master plan. It's not hardened stone, but it's guidance. It's your voice telling us, the council, how to, how to proceed, how to, what kind of direction to go in. We rewrote our land development regulations, so we're trying to attract activation and sensible development. I have not voted one time to raise your taxes. I have voted one time to reduce your taxes, but I've never voted to raise your taxes, so I've held my, held my word on holding the line on taxes. I want to bury the power lines. I want to run natural gas throughout the entirety of the village and I want to work on annexation of areas that we already service. In speaking with residents, and I speak with a lot of them, most of us are not for the narrowing of US Highway One. Beautification, absolutely. Activation, absolutely. But narrowing, I've not heard a lot of people suggest that that's a good idea. I really struggle to wrap my mind around spending almost $10 million when we have a lighthouse bridge that would probably be a higher, it would be a higher priority to repair that bridge or replace that bridge for me. Also in speaking with the residents, they're not supportive of this new project at 200 Yacht Club. I can't get behind a project that doesn't fit the area, that's not symbiotic with the community. So therefore, I will not be supporting 200 Yacht Club as it is existing. I've been endorsed by the Police Benevolent Association of Palm Beach County, the North Palm Beach Firefighters, the local 2928, the Hispanic Voters of Palm Beach County, and also North PAC, which is North County Chamber of Commerce. It is my goal to continue working hard for the village and I'm asking for your continued support. So vote Mark Mullenix on the March 8th.
Group five, Sean Woods.
Good evening to my friends and my neighbors. I want to thank you all for doing your civic duty and coming out to hear us speak and also to vote. It's one of the most important things you can do, especially in our municipal election because as you're hearing, these are the elections that affect you the most. So please tell your friends and neighbors what you've heard tonight and get them out to vote. So a little bit about my background. I was born in Anaheim, California and at the ripe old age of 50, I had the good sense to get out of there and I moved to Florida. It was one of the most fortuitous decisions I've ever made because we landed in the village of North Palm Beach. You guys threw us a parade on the first day we got here, which was so kind of you. Here in the village, I got to work very quickly. I thought it would be a great idea to get my real estate license, except I didn't realize that everyone and their mother and brother had one. So I didn't know anyone either, so what I started doing was going out and meeting people in the park and then I started picking up trash. Maybe some of you have seen me out there wondering who's crawling in the bushes, that was me. And through that, I met a lot of people and through that, I met a person who is a paralegal for an estate attorney and I got a listing and I got my start and that's how it went. I am on the ad hoc committee, which some people have mentioned this evening, which we are looking at our residential zoning code. And really what it is, is making some sensible and reasonable tweaks to what we already have so that we can protect the rights of all property owners, not just those with deep pockets, not just those who come in and have their grand ideas. We've lived here for a very long time and I know that you, like me, love living in the village of North Palm Beach. That's why we're here. I also serve on the environmental committee, which I feel was spun out of me cleaning trash. I don't think that people knew how dirty the Ariman River is, not only with litter that's coming in from storm drains on North Lake, but also with pollutants from upstream, pesticides we put on our lawns. There's a lot going on there that we need to address. I'm running for village council because I truly want to be your voice at village hall. Ever since I got here, one of the first things I did the first week was come to this very building and they were talking about the master plan and how they were going to implement it on US Highway One and what they wanted to do rewriting those codes. I thought, "This is perfect." This goes right up my alley because back in California, I owned restaurants and one of them was in Windsor, California, which is now an award-winning town for its redevelopment of its downtown. In fact, it didn't have one. It was a two-horse town and the street that I had my business on was a dirt road just prior to me opening. The town there wanted to have exactly a downtown, a gathering place that can light the tree, have movies in the park, have the farmer's market, and since I was the only business there, we were very instrumental in that. And what we created was a huge downtown square, a big green, residential units above and retail on the bottom. It was beautiful, it was walkable, bikeable, and the town really loved it. My second restaurant was in the Presidio of San Francisco. That is a national park. That took five years in the making. I had to negotiate with the Department of the Interior and their quasi-government agency called the Presidio Trust and trust was not what you could do with them. So I think it's very important that we do revisit that 2016 master plan because I think you can all agree, we live differently than we did back then, especially with COVID happening. I would like to have conversations with everyone, with all of you. You know, the biggest endorsement I can get is your vote. The fire people might endorse me, but it's you. It's the people, the citizens right here that are the glue that holds our community together. Your word is the most important word to me. And God gave me two ears and one mouth and I intend to use them appropriately and listen to your concerns so that we can get things done. The other thing I would like to do, you know, I go to the council meetings quite often and as I'm out there knocking doors, I've heard from a lot of residents, they feel intimidated to go into village hall and that concerns me because that's where we go to have our voices heard. We are the people that live here. It's important that we're heard and our message gets across and they're telling me they feel intimidated and why? It's because people are coming in and there's just this sense of divisiveness and hatred towards one another and I don't, I don't understand why it is we can't all just get along and get together and work for the common good. As a leader here, my goal is to have a collaborative process and have a transformational environment where we can bring solutions and have ideas brought forth that can serve the common good of our entire community. My driving principles, they've always been this way, nothing has ever changed, is integrity. I feel that everything matters, everything that you do, honesty and kindness, and I really understand that there's no one-size-fits-all solution to every problem. We must review the data, explore our values and make proper decisions. Thank you. Please vote for me, March 8th.
Thank you, candidates. And now we have some cards from you who would like answers from you. One of the things that was asked is, "What are your feelings about term limits?" Let's see, how would you like to do this?
Do you want all of us to answer? Do you want one of us to just jump on the grenade?
Let's go the, Mr. Silvani, what do you think about, let's just go down the line here.
I'm in favor of term limits.
Favor?
Do we have a hand?
Just a minute. I have something here that we might use. Mike?
Is it working?
Turn it, hold it down.
Is it working? There we go.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in favor of term limits.
You are?
I am in favor of term limits, yes.
I think in a municipality like this, the voters should exercise those term limits.
I agree. In a small town like this, the voters have the right to vote people in and out, it's only a two-year term and that's how it should go.
While I broadly am in support of term limits, the worry is that if you instill them, then all of a sudden lobbyists are the ones that are actually writing the legislation and actually doing the legislating. So when term limits are too short, then the council members don't actually get much of a chance to really understand how the sausage gets made and you end up having everything done by lobbyists. So while I support them in theory, it's all very complicated to put into practice.
Well, I also support term limits. I think that in a community like this, it's very important for everybody's voice to be heard and I think that everyone in this community should get a chance to voice their opinion, set their guidelines and work to keep this place as beautiful and as successful as it's always been. Thank you.
I agree that I like term limits for Washington. For here, I, there's, I have some trepidation and I will tell you why. After being elected since 2015, to, the first year, you're almost shrinking from a fire hydrant, trying to figure out what's up and what's down. You do get your bearings and term limits here, what do you mean by term limits? Are you talking eight years, 10 years, 12 years? I mean, if you're saying 12 years, I think that that's great. If you're talking two terms in four years, I think no. I think that what will happen is, is that a lot of your control, your ability to have your voices heard by your elected officials, a lot of that will be switched over to the staff, which staff is a great staff, but you're still trying to find your bearings as an elected official the first year and I think all of us who have been elected can verify that. So I think that, you know, if you did a 10-year or 12-year term limit, I don't have a problem. Anything shorter than that, I think would probably not be great.
Okay. We'll just have it go right down the list here. There has, I think one of you had alluded to the Yacht Club Drive, 200 Yacht Club Drive and affordable housing. Could you give your comments on that? One of our people want to know.
I'll go ahead and start. I am not in favor of the project as it stands. I told the developer early on, I think it was almost two years ago when we were having our meetings and he was accumulating the property, that I am not in favor of the rental option. I really do like the fact that we, I think that that area needs to be condo areas, it's more symbiotic with the, with the area and I think that will be better for that, that location.
I too am not in favor of the Yacht Club Drive development. There's a lot of things that we could consider or the, or the developer of that property could consider for there. You can't stop them from doing something, however, only having one means of egress and ingress onto Yacht Club Drive when it's already, if you ever got to that traffic light in the morning, it's very congested and the alley should never be used as a secondary means of ingress. So, you know, the developer needs to go back and consider what really works for this town and it's not the rental community. Thank you for your time.
I am also opposed to the project as it currently stands. Certainly, I want something there that is the heart of our village. It's across from our gorgeous country club. I can't see everyone over here, I'm stand-up, I'm too short, sorry. It is across from our gorgeous country club and it is where I want to go and spend money. I want restaurants, I want a coffee shop, I want a bookstore, I want something. That is supposed to be active use, that is what you all asked for with the comprehensive plan, with the master plan. It is supposed to be a vibrant commercial corridor. That is what y'all asked for and so I will fight to make sure that it stays. It could be mixed use, it could have some condos up top, but certainly the ground floor should be active, should be vibrant, should be a place for us to go gather and spend
I agree. We have zoning codes for a reason and that is to dictate what happens where in our village. I think the density that's been proposed there is far too overwhelming for that plot. We shouldn't be even entertaining this idea. I would like to see it be an active area, just like I did in Windsor, having retail on the bottom, working upstairs. People could have a business downstairs. Wouldn't it be nice to walk somewhere and grab a coffee, go to a gallery, sit down and meet your friends? It's really, it could be a lovely spot.
I've received a lot of text messages and emails from people that live in the area, primarily Yacht Club Drive. The primary objections are the traffic all enters out into Yacht Club Drive and secondly, they don't like the idea of rental units, although those rental units are premium units, they're $25,000 to $30,000 a year rent and the density's a little bit high. The developer has listened to those complaints and has those concerns and has withdrawn the project, presumably will bring it forth again hopefully and maybe a few changes. I've suggested a second outlet south of the unit to Route One would be helpful. The density's a little bit high, that needs to be considered, but we'll just have to wait and see what the developer comes with and then the council needs to make a judgment.
I also oppose the development as it stands and the real question is, how does it get, how did it get this far? If everybody's opposing it, wouldn't that message have been clear way back when to those developers as they were making those gorgeous plans and, and to present? How did it get that far? That's really the question and the issue is, no one seems to want apartments and $24,000 a year, $2,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment is probably the lowest rental income or rental that you can find in the village. So we're talking about workforce housing, we're talking about younger folks, one-bedroom apartments, we're talking about, I'm a child of the 60s and 70s. I was young once and I lived in a two-bedroom apartment and it was cheap and I shared a room with a, with a buddy and we knew how to party. And we don't want that kind of activity in and around the neighborhood on the east side of US One. There are other, maybe there are other better sections around North Palm Beach and West Palm Beach or Lake Park or other areas that would be more suitable. This, this project was just not suitable for that particular corridor and needs to be adjusted and I think we're getting, we're going that, going that route.
This question is concerned about dock rental. What is your idea about dock rental, which we have said is not something that we do in North Palm Beach?
I'll start. The code specifically says that you cannot have dock rentals behind your property, so I'm all for the codes, stick with the codes, I think that's fine. If you own a property and you have an occupant or maybe renting the property, the occupant has a, has a boat, it might not be the owner's boat, but it's certainly the occupant's boat. I think that qualifies, but just dock rentals, I oppose to.
Yeah, our code clearly states that homeowners are not allowed to rent their docks to third parties. We've been probably a bit remiss in enforcing that code, it's underway now to be enforced. Notices have been sent out to owners who are in violation of that and given a certain period of and given a certain period of time to come into compliance.
Again, I'm a follower of rules and codes. And I understand we do have that code. However, it seems like everything was going fine and a few bad apples spoiled a bunch. So it seems that someone wasn't following the rules and maybe having parties on their boats or renting them out. And now we're enforcing and doing other things. And people want their property rights. However, the people who live next to people who are having parties on their boat also have property rights. So we have to look at everyone's common good and their rights as well.
I want to make sure that North Palm Beach does not come the parking lot of mega yachts because there are some billionaires out there that think it is cheaper to buy a $2 million waterfront home and park their 150-foot yacht at a beautiful piece of property than it is to pay to have it in a marina. We are not a marina. We don't have a fire boat. We don't have the facilities to catch, if a boat catches on fire or if there's a gas leak. We don't have any of those equipment because we are not a marina. So I want to make sure that we don't become a parking lot for billionaires.
Well, I live on the water and my boat's behind my house. And, you know, frankly, we live in a private community. All of us do that live on the water. And we should have codes. If we don't have codes to stop that, we need to enact them. We don't need residential communities to become a boating marina. Thank you.
I support the codes as they stand. It clearly states that you don't use residential dockage as an income source. And that's the way it is.
This resident wants to know about how we can do something about parking at the country club. Parking study, perhaps? We have the most beautiful country club with the big investment. And parking is terrible.
I agree. I've been up there numerous times and have witnessed the problem firsthand. We are working on it. We have spoken, well, first off, the council. And I think it was close to $80,000 we spent to put millings up on the north end of the tennis court to try to address the problem and alleviate it. It's also an issue of trying to get all the employees to get their cars up there. It is a good problem to have, though. I remember when we had a clubhouse that didn't have this kind of demand. So this is welcome, but we have to address it. And we will address it. So it's heard, it's noted. I talked to Beth Davis about it yesterday. Andy and I have talked about it numerous times. And hopefully, we'll find a solution quickly.
Well, I was told that the country club knew every employee's license plate. But if you play golf at 7:45 or 8 o'clock, you see the chef and you see the people that work in the restaurant parking in the premier parking spots. I thought we built a parking lot on the north side of the tennis courts for them. So I don't know where it's all slipping, but there's something going on there. Thank you.
Before I comment on the parking lot, I just want to, what struck me is how blessed we are that we live in such an amazing community that the pressing issue is parking at a country club, right? A beautiful, award-winning, national gorgeous country club that so many people want to go to that parking is the biggest problem facing our town. We are so blessed, and we truly are the best place to live under the sun. That being said, we are working on the parking problem. Yes, there is the parking to the north of the tennis courts. And I know that some staff had been sort of hesitant to park there, particularly the female staff. It's kind of dark at night. And so working on getting staff to park there, but also making sure they feel safe parking there. So if they need lights or if they need escorts, that's all part of the solution as well because we want to keep our staff safe as well.
Wow, what a great problem to have. One solution might be, when we're going out for dinner, pick our friends up. And maybe we all four ride in one car so that we have less cars going over there. And what if we infill those areas when we have new development there? We have places to walk to. Maybe we can walk or ride our bike or take our golf cart. Do something other than our car.
Parking is a big problem there. I go there a couple of times a week. And I often myself end up parking in the employee parking lot because I can't park anywhere else. We did create that space for employees. And we've been working the farmer's table to enforce or require that the employees actually park in that. That's only a partial solution. Even if an employee parked there, we'd still have a bit of a problem. And we have to find a way to address that in the coming years or months.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the problem per se. And I would suggest that, I think you've heard the issue handled right. We've got to figure out where to place the parking, how to enlarge any parking availability throughout the yard. I don't have a complete answer on that as I'm really not familiar with how many parking, how much of a problem it really is. But we'll address it, and we'll get it fixed.
One last question. Let's see. Daryl, I think this was a question for you. A question was arisen about your longevity. So in regards to this question, some of your associates were asked to give permission to be quoted about your service on council. And one that I thought was very good says, "Daryl may be older, but he is sharper than any people I know that are half his age." How would you respond to that?
Well, what comes to mind is how Ronald Reagan responded one time when he faced a similar issue. He pledged to not hold his opponent's relative youth and inexperience against him. So I will, and you know how that ended, so I will say that. Thank you.
We are now at the end of our 7:30. It's a little after 7:30. But I would like to give you one final word from each one of you. Just maybe a one, two-word, something to leave with everybody. And then we have Milano Cookies, I think, out there. And Dum Dum Suckers. If you would like to stay and have some refreshments with us and talk to your neighbors, talk to your candidates, and get to know them a little bit better. Okay. Mr. Silvani.
Well, thank you very much. I think it's time for change. I think we need to move on some things that have been neglected and abused over the years. And it's time for some change, some new personnel to take the leadership.
Well, I would say if it isn't broke, don't fix it. If things are going well, why do you want to change leadership? Having said that, I very much appreciate your interest. And I very much appreciate your vote, and I appreciate your support. So thank you very much.
Having lived here only four years, I am in love with this place. And it is my mission to preserve and protect what we have here. This beautiful community, these wonderful people, the kindness that I encounter. That's my goal. Keep it how we like it.
Thank you all so much for coming out here tonight because we couldn't do it without you. You are the people that have put your faith in community leaders. You're going to vote for one of us, and I would like your vote. But regardless of whether you vote for me or not, this is truly the best place to live under the sun. And I have been thrilled to serve as your council member.
Well, I really, truly am just taken back by the applause and the love that you guys have given everybody up here. We're your neighbors. We're just taking time out to get something done. Leadership is my strongest quality. If I see something wrong, I make it better than it was before I got there. I am the kind of candidate that you can come and talk to and will rationalize what it is that you want to see changed and will try to implement it. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, everybody. It's, you know, it's a real pleasure and a treat to be elected to the council in your hometown. I thank you for allowing me to do what I get to do up here. I hope that you vote for me again on March 8th. I've effectuated a lot of change since I've been on council in 2015. You know, we built a new clubhouse. We've done a lot of stuff. A lot of the road millings have really stepped up in speed. A lot of the work that we've done on sidewalks, a lot of the stuff we've done for parks and wrecks. I'm pleased with the job that I've done. And I'm asking for another two years, two more years. And hopefully, we can annex a piece of property in the next two years. I've been pushing on that since 2015. And I'm hoping we can bury some power lines, or at least begin the process of burying some power lines.
There you have it. You can come and talk to them, have some refreshments. Thank you very much for coming on behalf of American Association University Women and North Palm Beach.